Sounds like my husband.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7:00. Let's stand and say the pledge. All right, thank you, everyone. We have correspondence.
This evening, we have sort of an unconventional correspondence. Mrs. Morin included in individual board packets, I believe. You should have received the letter that I submitted to Chairman Drew Klein from the State Board of Ed for the kindergarten and pre-kindergarten meal waiver request that was sent around.
All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right, commendations, good news. Lo.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Okay, so first of all, we do have our new elected student representative for next year. Brady McCann will be joining us later tonight and then next meeting, just to kind of understand what's going to happen next year for him. But I'm super excited and super grateful for him.
Wonderful.
Prom week is this week. There are 508 people signed up to go to prom at St. A's.
Wow. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
It's a lot of people.
This week is Spring Fling Week, which basically is kind of reimagined this year. We're doing kind of like a spirit day meets like games at lunch instead of a big event at the end because prom is on Friday. And then next week, seniors are doing kind of like a senior week. So it will be like the college decision day or future decision day where they wear swag for where they're going next year and whatnot. So yeah, some exciting things to wrap up the year. NAP tests are done.
Yay. Thanks, Lo.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Great. So over at Glen Lake, they did Woody's Walk and Wellness Day, which was a multiple to say, by the way, on Wednesday, May 15th. Kindergarten students and the four-year-old classes participated in a variety of wellness activities, including walking or jogging laps around the playground, dancing, stretching, and eating healthy snacks. Those snacks were donated by Stony Field Farm, so a special thank you to them for giving us some healthy snacks. The kids were able to earn stickers. They went back in as a class and counted their stickers as a math activity. They did announcements, overheads. So a special thank you to all of the Glen Lake Wellness Committee and all the parent volunteers that made that day really special for the kids. Over at Maple Avenue, they had their annual book fair last week along with several field trips. Third grade went to the Seacoast Science Center. First grade traveled to Squam Lake Science Center. And this week, the fourth grade will be going to Strawberry Bank. At the end of the week, Maple Ave is having their annual Memorial Day program. And there will be a short program in the morning for first and second graders and a lengthier program in the afternoon for grades three and four. And the keynote speaker this year is Chief Sereno from Goffstown Police. Over at Bartlett, their annual PTA penny wars were completed right before break. They raised about $1,500 during that, which is phenomenal. Each grade had one winning class in points and will be treated to a pizza party with Mrs. Gogan. For the conclusion of the All-School Read My Otter Path, everyone from Bartlett participated in a pet parade to Saret Field. The students brought duck animals to go on the park for a nice walk on a spring day. PTA also ran two successful back-to-back Small and Tall dances on May 11th. And on May 17th, the second graders enjoyed their field trip to Squam Lake. Over at Mountain View, last Thursday and Friday, they held two incredible performances of SpongeBob the Musical. A special thank you to the director, Jocelyn Duford, and all of the Mountain View performers for putting on a really fantastic show. Also, the MBMS Chess Club, led by Mr. Howard, attended a chess competition at St. Benedict Academy on May 11th. Our students, we had nine of them that participated, and they had a really great showing at that competition. So lots of great things going on.
Wow, thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, see you in none. We'll move on. Do we have public comment tonight? I know, Nancy, I agree. So you know the spiel.
Scott would be upset if I didn't.
Say your name and address for the record. And we ask you to keep it to three minutes.
Nancy Peterman, Baymore, New Boston. I didn't get to finish my comments from last week because I wrote a lot, so I'm just going to continue on about the books. Again, still have not heard back from the superintendent, but according to policy, he does not have a deadline, so. There were many reasons listed by the committee as to what they considered reasons for keeping these books. First of all, I'd like to remind people that we have movies. Movies are rated. We have G, PG, and yes, I'm old enough to remember when we got PG-13 because we didn't have it when I was a kid, and then R-rated movies. The books that I am challenging are R-rated books. There are no ratings for books. We even have ratings for video games. These books are not E for everyone. They're definitely not even close. One of the reasons they said that they should keep these books was intellectual freedom. I'm all for freedom when you're an adult. Minors need guidance, and we have restrictions on what they can and cannot be exposed to based on RSA 571B and also morals and ethics. I mean, we should not be showing children these images. It's considered child abuse. Educational suitability. Exposure to diverse content is good for students. Tell me how exposing them to these graphic and obscene images is suitable. It's not. Showing children sexualized images before maturity is harmful to their brain development and their overall mental health. There have been many scientific studies that have come to that conclusion. In fact, a recent study stated that one of the reasons for the mental health crisis of students we are facing now is from the exposure of minors to pornography. First Amendment rights. Those rights also come with restrictions. You can't yell "fire" in public, in a public place, if there's no fire. You would face consequences, and the same with showing or giving sexualized obscene materials to children, according to 571B. It is a misdemeanor to do so also. Promoting understanding. In The Pride of Baghdad, how is a graphic visual rape scene promoting understanding? How are sexual scenes in other books promoting understanding? Parental involvement. They value it. But I know that when my child attended GHS, I would never have thought that these types of books would be at the GSH library. In 2019, I challenged a book that the school purchased for every junior and senior for the summer reading program at the cost of over $30,000. I was surprised that this book, which had stories from celebrities, was thought to be educational. I was even more surprised when the administrators who presented this book to the school board had only read the first two chapters. This book never even went through C and E committee. I trusted the staff at GHS to pick literature that had quality written work, not political propaganda that spewed hatred for police. I never thought that the GHS library would have books with obscene and sexual graphic images. That trust is now gone. Age-appropriate materials. The law states that sexual and obscene material cannot be given or loaned to a minor. There's a small percentage of students at GHS who turn 18 during their senior year. Until you're 18, you still have to be signed out by a parent to leave the school grounds. But you think giving minors pornographic materials is okay? Movies and video games, as I've said, have ratings, and those are nationwide and agreed upon standards by everyone in the industry. Books have no standards rating system, and each publishing company makes up their own guidelines.
Nancy, it's been two minutes.
Thank you. Literary exploration. When did it become the job of the GHS library to supply minors with pornographic materials? Some people in this community would say, what about biology, art, and health class? That may have to show pictures that fall under this definition. If the material shows serious literature, artistic, and political or scientific value, then it's considered safe. The RSA 571B states that. These books do not have any value, so now what? I still have not heard from the superintendent, as I said, and if you're wondering what images I've ducked to, I have copies here for you to preview. My final request, as I said last week, is besides adding a deadline for the superintendent to reply to the IJL policy, I would like a review of all graphic novels at GHS to be sure that they are not harmful to minors, according to New Hampshire law. And finally, there are some parents that have spoken out on Facebook about things that are talked about at the school board, that they're harming their children. This is an adult meeting, and I'm talking to adults. I would not talk about this with minors. And if you're allowing your minor child to hear what's going on at a school board meeting, which is an adult conversation at an adult meeting, that's on you as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else for a public comment? Hi, Karen, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you keep your comment to three minutes.
Karen Menaski, Rochambeau.
Thanks.
Street. This is a really personal issue for me. I'm piggybacking on what was just spoken about. I have a history of sexual abuse that started from childhood and went all the way up into my 30s. What happened to me, I thought, was normal. And as I've walked through, because I'm not 30 anymore, as I've walked through the process of healing from that abuse, what I have learned is that this type of behavior starts very young, and it's when children abuse themselves and then they go on to abuse others. These books that we're seeing in the school libraries, I'm concerned about children not having the understanding because their brains aren't mature. Their brains aren't mature enough to handle what they're seeing. And if their parent isn't involved in taking them and showing them or whatever, then what are we doing to that child? There are, and you can look, there are plenty of videos out there where there are parents that are upset about books like this in the schools. And they can't even read aloud the words that are written in the book because they're so obscene. So my concern is that we don't normalize behaviors that can lead to abuse and addictions for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, Lo?
Hi, Lily Hazelbaker, 23 Time Way. I, one, would like to say as a student at GHS and as the student representative, it is super important for students to watch these meetings and be here. I strongly encourage my entire student council to watch these meetings and become informed as you are representing them. I would also like to say, as a student at GHS, I have been in this library a lot, and these librarians have not only encouraged education but have protected these students for as many years as I have been here. And I have never picked up a book in this library that has had any of that content in it. I think it is important to remember that, you know, the students that are coming into this library, you know, may just want to read, and reading can be fun. And yes, it can also be educational, but it's important that, one, students watch these meetings and are welcome to come and to feel safe in this library. Thank you.
Thank you, Lo. Anyone else for public comment? All right, see you in none. I'm closing public comment. And Lo, did you want to introduce?
I would love to. This is the new student representative, Brady McCann.
Hello.
Hi, Brady, welcome.
He is a current sophomore at Goffstown High School. He's very involved in the music department. Do you want to say anything?
I think that's got things pretty well covered. Sorry for being late.
No worries.
I have some commitments, I just got to reschedule very shortly.
No problem. Well, congratulations. We look forward to having you at our table.
Thank you. Glad to work with you guys.
Yes, so we're going to move on. We have a couple presentations. First, we're going to call Becky up from the New Hampshire School Board Association.
So if I can do the introduction, this is Becky Wilson. She is the Director of Governmental Relations and Affairs for the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And this is a special place, I think, for Becky because Becky has a deep connection to Goffstown.
It is true. I'm getting over a respiratory illness, so I apologize if my voice is, I've also done like three webinars in the last week or two. As Superintendent Balky was saying, my name is Becky Wilson. I'm the Director of Governmental Relations at the New Hampshire School Boards Association. It's always great for me to be back here at SAU 19. My very first public school position as a public educator was at Mountain View Middle School. Many, I won't say how many years ago, many, many years ago. And I was educator here for 10 years in this district, so Goffstown holds a very special place in my heart, and it's always great to be back here celebrating all of the wonderful things that are happening here in this district. But tonight, I'm here specifically to celebrate your student school board representative, Lily, who has been selected as one of our NHSBA scholarship recipients for the 2024 school year. Each year, the New Hampshire School Boards Association is proud to offer yearly scholarship programs. We offer 10 scholarships per year, five for students who are family members of current sitting school board members, and five for student representatives that we started a couple of years ago when that law was passed to mandate that every school board that has a high school within its jurisdiction have a student school board rep to elevate student voice. So these are relatively new scholarships. We've awarded about $60,000 worth of scholarships over the last three years. So the factors that we consider for award winners are academic achievement, active participation in school-sponsored, and extracurricular activities, community service, and the applicant's response to a topic of the role of student voice in decision-making at the school board level. NHSBA is pleased to announce that for the South Central Region, Lily is the recipient of this wonderful scholarship. Her academic accomplishments are numerous. She has maintained a solid GPA while engaging in rigorous AP courses. She's a member of the National Honor Society, the TriM Music Honor Society, and the Social Studies Honor Society. In addition to excelling as a student academically, she's participated in many extracurricular activities, which I will not list them all because I am for certain to forget something that she's probably just picked up this week or relatively recently, as well as participating in a number of leadership initiatives across the state. Lily's references describe her as a person who is a highly positive presence at school board meetings, a person of integrity, courage, and leadership, and an advocate for meaningful policy change. These are just a few of some of the many accomplishments, I think, that Lily has brought to the school board in her time as a school board representative here. So we could not be more excited to present you with this scholarship, Lily. We're very fortunate to have had you as a role model for influencing and impacting other student reps as they come onboard into this role, and we certainly are very grateful for all your participation in NHSBA events as well. So congratulations. Looking forward to whatever's next for you and hearing about all of the wonderful impacts that you'll make on this world.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's get a picture.
We would like a picture.
Becky and mom and dad and everybody.
Yeah. Oh, sure. Do you want to take the picture?
Thanks for coming, Becky.
Thanks for having me. Like I said, it's always great to be back here.
Hi, how you doing?
All right, Brady McCann, no pressure, but this is the level that we expect, so you better get cracking at it.
Thank you, Becky. Take care. All right, the next is the High School Handbook Amendment. Wendy?
Mrs. Kohler.
Yep, so I'm actually going to introduce Mrs. McCann, who's going to come up and present an amendment that we'd like to have to the GHS Handbook. She presented it to C and E last Monday, and she'll explain to you why this late amendment is coming. It actually is in your packet, and I believe it was sent out by Mrs. Morin with your packet earlier as well.
It's on page five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So roughly about a week, week and a half after you finalized handbooks for the upcoming school year, we received notification through our database manager, Betsy Murdock, that the state has altered the process by which we are going to need to report attendance next year. So historically, the state has collected whether or not a student is present or absent from school. Starting in the middle of next school year, but retroactive to the start of next school year, they are going to be asking for attendance to be reported as present, absent excused, absent unexcused. These changes do not align with our current practices at the high school, and they do not align with the current coatings that exist district-wide in Power School. So the data that we are putting in has to change in order for the outputs to meet the requirements of the state. The high school is unique from the other schools currently in the district in that you have policy in place relative to attendance. And then the high school has this added layer of practice that has been in place for 30-plus years. Historically, going back at least to the mid-'80s, early-'90s, if you missed 12 or more days in a school year, you did not receive credit for the courses that you were taking, and that was fairly non-negotiable. Over time, there was a realization that sometimes life happens, and an appeals process was put into place. Then, in 2000, when we shifted from a traditional 45-minute, seven-day, or seven-class, everyday schedule to a block scheduling format, we created a point system to take that attendance practice at the high school and have it align with what our current schedule looked like. And some of you might recall, when we first went from that schedule to the block schedule, we had a few iterations in between. So when we first made change, every class still met on Monday, and we had two 45-minute classes that still met every single day in the middle of the day. So we created a system where if you were tardy or dismissed, you earned a quarter of a point. If you missed one of those 45-minute classes, it was a point. And if you missed a full double-block class, it was two points. And once you went over 12 points, which was the equivalent to 12 days, credit was withheld. None of this works with the new reporting system at all. So the proposal is that all of the pieces relative to points will go away. And this is something we've talked about a number of times as an administrative team. We had talked about it in 2018, 2019, and were trying to look at a proposal to bring forward at the time to make some modifications to this. Frankly, it was, this is probably one of the most complicated and confusing pieces of educational practice in the state of New Hampshire. And as we were trying to work through it, we had come to the realization that it either had to go entirely, or it had to stay as it was with the attendance appeal process in place. Then COVID happened. Then we had the hybrid year. And attendance has still been a little bit of a challenge in terms of how do we address it? Even at the beginning of this year, we still had students and families who, under, you know, practices were quarantining. And so it hadn't really been a front-and-center piece for us to look at. And then the state came out with this process, and we said, well, it seems like this is the time to do it. It's to remove the points altogether. Students will be marked as absent or present. Excused absences are already defined per policy, as you can see here, and it's policy JH. It's a district-wide policy. And we already have other practices in place to monitor student attendance, as well as a plug-in attendance monitoring system with Power School that is currently in beta testing and will be rolling out in the future, where parents will be able to go in and notify us through Power School that the student is going to be out, as well as to provide a reason in that process that will determine the excused or unexcused piece. We have a pupil assistance team at the high school that meets weekly. Every other week, part of our routine process is to review attendance. Any student who has missed five or more classes at that point in the semester is flagged, and we take a look at, and we make contact. Over 10 half-days of absence, and there is a process by which letters go home to families, school counselors are reaching out and making contact, and then when it reaches state-defined truancy, calls are made to DCYF. So there are a lot of stopgaps already in place that we think will allow us to continue to effectively monitor and hold students accountable for attendance without the point system in place. And so our proposal would be that the piece all goes, and that what goes into the handbook is the policy as it is written at the school board level.
Question? Can I also add? At C and E, Kim talked about the fact of the no-credit. Most of the students that were getting to that point of 12 or more, they were not passing the courses anyways. It's a natural consequence when you're not in class that you don't pass the class. So I think that's one of the important factors for you to know as well. And I think it is important, Kim talked about kind of those fail safes that they have for communication with families and things like that for those students that are getting up there with concerns about truancy.
Go ahead, Dan.
So if I understand what you're saying, everything that's gray, high light on our yellow paper is going away?
Yes.
And everything that is yellow is coming in?
Yes. I like the changes, so I will move to accept the GHS handbook changes as presented.
Thank you, Karen. And Nicole, you second. Any further discussion? Okay, see you in none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
And thank you, Wendy.
We should always thank Mrs. McCann for the great work she does at the high school. But this, again, is another example of the kind of work that we get from the New Hampshire Education Department. So here we are, handbooks are already approved, they come in with a rule change, now we've got to all scramble and go back and make adjustments. So thank you for always being flexible, Mrs. McCann.
Brian, may I just say, this is supposed to start January 1st, but Mrs. McCann said, well, that's crazy to go back and report since September, you know, backdate all of that and send it to them. So her proposition was to start it in September next year instead of waiting to January and then backtrack everything, so.
She's always got the right plan. She sure is.
And if I can piggyback off that, the system itself isn't going to be ready until January, but we are going to have to go back and place that information in starting in September. So it's not that we don't want to put the information in because we'd rather keep up with it. It's that's when the department has told us that the system will be ready for us to enter the information.
Wow, thank you, Wendy.
Which is crazy.
Yeah. Scott, did you have your hand up?
No.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, so moving on, now we're going to have Bartlett Teaching and Learning presentation. Come on down, guys. And we have handbooks that Mrs. Kohler handed out to us.
Mrs. Kohler, you want to do an intro?
Yes. I'm ecstatic to have Bartlett Elementary here today. Mrs. Gogan, are you coming up to introduce your team, or would you like me to have the honors? Well, I don't want to instill your thunder.
Hello? Just hand it off. Welcome.
We will be hearing from the literacy committee this evening.
Who's our next?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lynda Bellone, and I teach Title I at Bartlett.
I'm Kristen Brown. I teach fourth grade at Bartlett.
I'm Holly Burke. I'm the library media specialist at Bartlett.
And I'm Chelsea Ramstall. I'm a grade four teacher at Bartlett.
Nice, welcome.
We are a voluntary committee that meets monthly to create ideas on how to share our love for reading with the Bartlett community.
One of our favorite things to do is our All-School Read. It's been a tradition for about 15 years at Bartlett, and you might be wondering, what does it mean? Well, an All-School Read is where every child receives a free book to bring home to their family, and every staff member receives the same book. to bring home to their family, and every staff member receives the same book. And we all read it, this was this past book that we did this spring, and we all read it in sync. So we're given a bookmark with a schedule of, like, March fourth, which is chapters one through four. So what's good about this is it creates the homeschool connection. And it's fun because during morning announcements, Mrs. Gogan will come on, and she'll talk about the chapter she just read, and kind of propose some questions to the kids over the morning announcements, and the kids like that. Could you tape this slide? We culminate the book with a big, school-wide activity. And most of the pictures you see up on the screen right now are from last year's when we did a book about a little boy named Owen Jester. And he captured a frog and tried to make it his friend, and he had to devise a house for his frog. So we did a big STEAM Day activity where the kids got to be engineers and devise all kinds of, you know, try building different things, bridges, houses, and each classroom took on a different project, and the kids rotated from room to room. So it just really helps them comprehend the book better and remember the book. The slide you're looking at now is just a feedback we got from the fourth graders about their feelings about the All-School Read. And we definitely wanted to hear from the fourth graders because they've done it all four years.
Another initiative that we worked on is Reading Buddies. We had heard that Bartlett had done it in the past, and we wanted to bring it back. So we started with first and fourth graders meeting up every once in a while and reading with each other. But this year, we wanted the whole school involved. So we paired up first in third grade and fourth and second. And we schedule meetings for them monthly, so they get to read with their buddy. And we found that they were really thoughtful when picking out books for their buddy. They thought about, would my buddy like this book or not? And they brought them to them and pair up to read. And next, you'll see a video of some students sharing what they like about Book Buddies. What do you like about Reading Buddies?
I like how they're long and they speak out loud. I like how they're conversational, because my teacher really likes to talk to me.
I like about Reading Buddies because we don't see each other at recess, but we do see each other in class.
Oh, great. So another initiative that we have is the Bartlett Literary Magazine. You guys have a couple copies in front of you. It's the first two editions of this year's literary magazine. The students all have access to it as an e-magazine on either Schoologee, or they can find it in the Hedgehog Headlines. Authors that get published into this, like student authors that are published in the magazine, get a hard copy for them to keep and take home with them. You can thumb through them to see some of Bartlett's staff and students' best work. The goal of this initiative was to encourage students to write, edit, and improve their literacy skills. They, the work must be original and completed to the best of their ability. If they create a piece of work that seems creative, they can, creative and, like, well put together, but needs a little bit of improvement, they may be asked to make edits by an adult or with an adult. And in the past, members of our committee have volunteered some of their, like, lunch or recess time to work with students to help them edit during an editing session, to revise their work, so it can be published. On the next slide, you'll see that we interviewed some Bartlett students regarding the literary magazine, and these are their thoughts.
Reading the Bartlett Literary Magazine, and I saw this joke.
What do you think of the magazine?
It's amazing.
You like reading it? You want to tell me a joke?
What did the scene say to the other scene?
What?
It just went.
All right, Anthony, how does it feel to be published in our school magazine?
It feels pretty good, actually, because I never thought that this would get in here, that my poem would get in there, because I was scared when I wrote it.
So you were surprised to see it in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that means you did a great job. Any advice for anybody that wants to make something for the next magazine?
Don't be scared.
Okay. We also have lots of staff members at Bartlett who enjoy reading for pleasure. So this year, we decided to start a staff book club. We met three times this year during lunch recess time, and we read books in different categories. So in the fall, we read a book written for elementary school students, so we can stay current with what's being published for the age group that we teach. Over the winter, we had our most well-attended session when we read a nonfiction title called "What Happened to You: Conversations on Trauma, Resilience, and Healing." This book looks at human behavior from a trauma-informed lens, and we found it extremely helpful when thinking about student behaviors. And then in the spring, our members voted on an adult fiction book that they wanted to read to gear up for some summer pleasure reading. So we had great participation, good discussions, and I did get some feedback from some of the participants. So with regards to specifically the nonfiction title, "What Happened to You", a staff member said, "Reading this book allowed for deeper conversation about why students behave the way they do." And a second staff member commented that it was well-written, insightful, and helped broaden our perspectives when approaching a child in crisis. Speaking about the book club.
Uh, literacy?
No, you're okay. Speaking about the book club in general, another staff member commented that it encourages self-care in the form of reading and more casual conversation at a job where that is hard to come by during the day. And then we also have one more video that a staff are reading for us, it's okay.
Really helped me, as a Bartlett staff member, have a chance to spend time with my fellow staff members and collaborate and share ideas and meet socially. It's also really helpful because we studied a book about trauma, and the information was really useful for everybody that works here.
So in addition to those four main initiatives that we worked on this year, we also have a variety of traditions and enrichment opportunities that come up at Bartlett to support literacy. So one of those is our Birthday Books Program. On a student's birthday, they get to visit the principal's office and choose their very own book to keep as a gift. And we thank the PTA for helping us keep this tradition going every year. Also, our first graders take a field trip to the Gothstown Child's Library, so they get to meet the staff in the children's room, take a tour, and see what the library's all about. We do this hoping that they will return with their families to get their own library card and become lifelong library users. Last year, we had a special opportunity to have a Bartlett alumni return and talk about his career as a published author. So Matt Forrest SNY visited and gave presentations to the students, and also did a special writing workshop for grade four. He shared all of his books with us, and it was just great to make the connection for kids between someone who was a student at Bartlett and is now a published author. So we always try to keep a pulse on kind of what the students and teachers need, and we try to come up with opportunities to meet those needs. So thank you for listening to our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ginny.
No question, but this just really sounds like a cool project, that you do all of these things, and the literary magazine is awesome.
Yeah.
So, and I think it's great that you get together and read together. Good role models for kids, if they know that, you know, you're getting together. Teachers are getting together and enjoy reading. I think that's awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Ginny.
And I'd just like to thank the staff for coming here this evening, the work that they're doing at Bartlett to put literacy at the forefront. You know, this is just a small piece of the puzzle. This committee has done some fantastic work, but it's become part of the culture of Bartlett, which I think is really important, so kudos to all of you for your hard work. It truly does make a difference.
Good stuff.
Four wonderful teachers. So we're so appreciative and so grateful that you came out tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. Go ahead, Caroline.
So I just, I certainly agree. I don't have any questions. I just want to say that this is a really thoughtful program that you have created. And one of the key things I heard from you at the beginning is that you are a voluntary committee. You're taking the extra time out of your, you know, already busy days and all the responsibilities and duties that you have to do this. And it really, you know, helps the kids, but that home and school connection that you're also building is so important. And so I think that this is wonderful on every level, and you've thought about it at every aspect that you can. So the buddies is great, the fact that you're doing this together as teachers, like Ginny said, you know, being good role models. But then also, your book selection is really good. It's helping you professionally to help your students, so in turn, it's just coming really in a circle, and I love that.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, just a quick comment, you could tell how proud that student was to have been published in the magazine, so I'm sure lots of other students felt that way, too. So really great way to show the kids that there are opportunities for them to showcase their work.
That was my student, and I did a better.
Awesome. Anyone else? Comments, questions? All right, well, thank you, guys, appreciate you coming and giving us all the information. You can leave, you don't have to stay. Yes.
I enjoy these little presentations, like, you know, fifteen minutes, and it really shows us what's going on, because a lot of people think, oh, you know, blah, 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 blah. But these kind of presentations show them, like, really great things that happen in our school, and I don't think they get enough chances to see. And they read a lot of stuff, but, like, right in front of your own eyes, these are things that kids and teachers are doing in our schools. And I think that's really important to get out to people. This is what's happening in our schools and our towns, and it's great stuff. So I think whenever we can, like, bring a group in that is doing cool stuff like this, we should. So that people know that really good things are happening. And the more we can tell people that, you know, the better they'll look at our schools.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Send it out on TikTok videos.
Thank you, Ginny.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on, the approval of the May sixth school board meeting minutes. I do want to just say, at the very end, when we went into, when we left non-public, a paragraph was put in twice, so it's the exact same paragraph, it's just in twice. So we'll need to remove that. Do you see it?
Oh, yeah, it's the one that starts with my name.
Yeah, you motioned to leave twice, but it was only once. So we just need to take that out. Did anybody see anything else? No? Go ahead, Scott.
I just wanted to disclose that I did the minutes on, and I did use artificial intelligence for this, for some of it, about seventy percent of it. So Nancy, if I, I did not get your comments until afterwards, so if you, if there's a problem, you can blame Bing's Copilot for the synopsis. But I did want to at least disclose that I'm not a very good typist. But AI, believe it or not, I thought did a fairly good job of summarizing. And, you know, we've been getting a lot of training on these different tools and applied it on this one due to the need to do it, so.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so we'll need a motion with the correction.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May sixth as amended.
Thank you, Reda. Do I have a second? By Jack. Any further discussion? Okay, C and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, one abstention, and then the rest is yes. Motion passed. All right, committee reports, A and F. Dan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the manifest presented this evening in the amount of one million, nine hundred sixty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Okay, go ahead.
We get payroll, taxes, benefits to the tune of one point four million dollars, I'm going to round. Sped activity that was individual payments to a company, not individual, but total payments to a company, over five thousand. Johnson ABA Consulting, seventy-five hundred. That's, most of these are just bed contracted services, out-of-district services, so I don't have to repeat all of that. The Lighthouse School, close to twenty-two thousand. Nashua Children's Alliance, seventy-five hundred. New Boston Physical Therapy, around fifty-eight hundred. Parker Education, sixty-eight hundred. And the big one, the Seven Hills, which is two students. One is a resident, and it's for one month, forty-five thousand, five hundred. General expenses for those items, Amazon, twelve thousand, eight hundred. Books, equipment, supplies. Dead River Company for propane, ninety-four hundred. Gothstown Truck Center for the Levitt kindergarten and lake buses, thirteen thousand, four sixty. GovConnection is where we get our IT equipment from. Grant-funded, ten thousand, eight hundred. The Home Depot Pro, which is the facility, supplies, and equipment, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred. Electricity from EverSource, ten thousand, eight hundred. Hasi Bleacher inspections and maintenance, and that's both at MVMS and Gothstown High School, sixty-three fifty. Pelmac, the access controls, grant-funded, almost done, close to forty-eight thousand. PandaDoc, which is our portion of the annual electronic signature software for Gothstown, seventy-eight hundred. And we paid SAU nineteen for April and May, two hundred and forty-two thousand. We bought food, twenty-five.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments for Dan? All right, C and none, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan. All right, go ahead, Scott.
So I just wanted to give the board a brief update. The EMC project is going to commence at the end of the school year. They are going to be decommissioning and removing some boilers before the end of the school year, probably here at Gothstown High School. But it's going to be a full-court press for the months of, you know, late June, all the way through late August, so just be prepared for that. We expect to close on a lease purchase by the end of this month, but all, everything has been submitted to Bank of America, which is the financing company. So we had a project management meeting this morning, and as I mentioned to A and F, half of the vendors around the table were ones that we've dealt with in previous projects, so that was reassuring for us. We will be getting weekly status updates from EMC for the first four to six weeks, and then after that, it'll be two weeks thereafter. They told us that substantial completion of the project will occur by August twenty-third, with final completion no later than mid to late October, recognizing that the lighting, which we're retrofitting all the lighting with LED lights in all of our buildings, that might be the one that might go later, but we are going to, the plan is to prioritize the heating controls and the boilers first, and that's going to happen. So good news on that project, we're moving forward. The next topic that we discussed in A and E was the school transportation contract. And we had some discussion about whether or not I had put down a waiver of the purchasing policy. And Dan, I'll turn it over to you. Dan, you had felt that maybe that was not needed based upon the policy itself, and I guess it was bullet five.
If you look at Policy DJV, go to page two, in the fifth bullet from the top. The bullet on the top says, "Renewal of the current vendor's service contracts where quality and timely performance is a critical requirement and where the business administrator determines renewal is in the best interest of the Gothstown School District." This is an exception to the bidding or written quotation requirement. Mr. Business Administrator, do you feel this reflects the bus contract as you see it at this point?
I do, and I'll state the reasons why, if I may. One, we have had this particular vendor for decades. Secondly, due diligence was done. I did reach out to, there aren't that many providers. Did reach out to another provider with regard to a contract. Also reviewed the contracts of about a dozen other school districts in southern New Hampshire with respect to whether the pricing was competitive, and it was. So I do believe that this is being done in the best interest of the school district, and therefore, you know, it's my intent to continue the negotiations and to finalize the contract with the current provider.
So if we believe that his explanation follows the rules, we don't actually have to do a motion to waive the purchasing policy because it is part of the policy. So if anybody doesn't think it is, then they would offer a motion.
Everybody good? All right, thank you, Dan.
And just for the record, for transparency, we do discuss contracts like this in a non-public session, and everything that I just stated was stated in a non-public session, and I showed the board neighboring communities, their pricing, et cetera. So I just want that, it wasn't just me affirming, I did demonstrate that to the board. The next topic that we discussed was our district-wide telephone system. And in speaking with Mr. Borget, he's been working with Gary Geralman, our former IT director, and they've drafted an RFP which will be issued to replace our existing phone system, which is. will be issued to replace our existing phone system, which is now out of service warranty, meaning that the, that it is, it's old. We're having, we do buy used telephones when we have issues, when we have to replace them on Amazon and eBay. So it's, we are looking to be proactive with this. And the RFP, and it's, it's one that I know Mr. Borget has talked to Dan about, who's the, our IT board member consultant. And what we, the, the RFP is written in a way that it can go multiple paths. We can either own all of our equipment, meaning that we're gonna host it, servers, et cetera. Or it can be done as more of a software as a service, more where you're buying a license. So the RFP is written so that it can go either way. I will share with you from a funding perspective, if it is equipment, the phones themselves can be replaced using our capital reserve fund because it's an existing capital asset, as well if we replaced a server, that's an existing capital asset. If we proceeded down the road of buying this as a licensed software as a service, we could not use that. So I just throw that out there. But that is gonna be issued, I believe tomorrow. And then I told Steve to have the due date ready before your board retreat. So that, that's the final school board meeting where part of that meeting is actions of the board, then the rest is retreat. But we should have some sort of answers as to the outcome of this RFP at that time. Any questions on that?
Go ahead Jared.
Just as a question Scott. So I know that in some instances, companies have looked at using their computers as their phone system and that software as a service that you talk about. Is that one of the options that we have as part of this RFP so that if a teacher's in a classroom?
Not necessarily.
Versus working remotely?
Not necessarily.
They have one number, it comes to their computer to be able to answer, and they don't have to worry about, you know, having a phone.
Not necessarily, because having a phone in each classroom for emergency purposes is still needed. So you're, you would be accurate in the sense of using the, a laptop, which we do provide as a way to communicate, yes. But the need to have a hard phone or a phone in each classroom is for safety purposes.
What's the difference between a phone and an intercom that could be used?
Part of what's different is in every single classroom, each individual phone is programmed for the E nine-one-one system. So that if there's a nine-one-one call made, they know exactly what room, what building it is. I'm not sure how that would work. I'm sure there's a way to do something like that.
If we have an intercom system and we wanna talk to one classroom, I'm sure that we can do that. If one classroom wants to talk to the office, I'm sure that we can do that as well.
It's only between the office and the classroom. There's no ability to go classroom to classroom in that sense through some of the intercom systems, but.
And there's no way to have a private conversation. The whole class hears it too.
Well, that's why you have a phone through your computer. I mean, if we're talking about the need, as what was just directed from the business administrator, that we have to have an emergency situation, I believe a LAN intercom system would do that work. And also being able to cut down on some of our expenses and using a licensing system so that we can get ahold of the teachers regardless of where they are, whether in the class, whether they're doing remote schooling or anything else, they have one number, we know it goes to their computer that has a license, where they also have their voicemail as well. I think that that needs to be something that also is looked at.
And that is one, the, the RFP is written, so that is an option for, for any vendor. So it's very wide open.
Reda, you had your hand up.
I, I see the value of both sides. I, I have some concerns about having to boot up a computer, find the app and make a call in an emergency situation. I think there's a lot of benefits to being able to, to use a phone on a, on a laptop. But if you don't have it ready, it's a little cumbersome. And I would be concerned in an emergency situation.
Go ahead Dan.
The other thing is, if, I don't believe the phones in the classroom are only for teachers. In an emergency situation, a student would have to use the phone. Hey, my teacher just collapsed. If it's on, only on a computer, now, an intercom might be appropriate. But if it's a nine-one-one call, it wouldn't, you would have to have someone on the other end of the intercom to get that right away. There's the parameters. Risk reward on everything. It needs to be looked at as a risk reward option.
Absolutely. That's why I say an intercom, you have one button to press. You don't have to dial star nine-one-one.
But there's someone has to be on the other side.
They have to, but thing is, they don't have to remember a number to call either. And have to get confused on an outside line, you gotta press a number. So again, just options that I wanna throw out there that we have as part of this RFP.
Scott, do you feel like that option is covered?
Yes. It is so, this RFP is so broad. I'm not worried about.
So different kinds of options. Traditional, one classroom.
We did that. Yeah, we, it's, it's broad for a variety of reasons to, because there is technology out there. And the second one is the reason why it's broad, due to the funding situation. So, so it's, I'm, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna see a lot of different options depending upon the type of vendor that bids on it. Which I can't, that we can't control. So Steve is gonna solicit bids from a wide array of contractors. You just never know, like, who's actually gonna put a bid in, you know?
So Dan has his hand up again. Go ahead Dan.
Do we have a one-button Porsche intercom system, district-wide?
I don't think we do. That's another issue.
The intercom systems are different in all of the buildings. So when the phone system is used, the actual phone, that's the.
The intercom.
Right. That's the phone and the intercom. It's both.
Okay. That's where the speaker is and.
The problem, well, what, yeah.
All kinds of different.
The speakers aren't that loud on the phones.
Right.
Some of the classrooms have supplementals, but they're, they're all a little different.
All right Scott.
All right. Next one is update on the FY twenty-four fund balance. So you'll see that is in your packets. And that would be on page number thirty-two. And what I wanted to share with you is that, couple of things. One, fund balance projections. Laura, when Laura and I talk about fund balance projections, we try to go conservative, meaning that as of now, what you see before you is that this, where we are now, at this point in time, we would hit the target of what we had projected when I issued those revenue sheets, of the amount to be returned for, to the taxpayers through either over collection of revenues and or underspend of the budget, which is, our, our estimate was about one point seven million dollars. And we're pretty much right there. This, it's at this point in time. So when I talked to A and F earlier today, I'm going to, again, punt this another two weeks. So at your first June meeting, I'll be able to share with you where we feel in the business office, whether we can do those retirement stipends, which we have done in the past, where we pay them out of this year's budget. It's looking like it's sixty, forty that we could do it based upon today's recalculations. We have a bit more revenues than, than we did, say, two to three weeks ago. But a lot can change. So I, I shared with, with the superintendent last week, where I think I got hit with like a hundred thousand dollars of expenses between special ed, transportation and others. So things in, in our business, and with a fifty-plus million dollar budget, things happen quick. So at this point in time, it looks favorable. It couldn't, it may not look that way two, three weeks from now. So wanted to give you just an update there. So expect at your June, at your first June meeting, we will talk about retirement stipends and a revised look at the fund balance. The last thing, which is not on your agenda, but was something that we did talk about in A and F under, on other business, if you backtrack to page thirty-one, you'll recall, this is more of an accounting cleanup, audit cleanup thing. But on page thirty-one, Laura had, had shared this with me late last week on Friday. We did two capital projects. One was, we upgraded the Goffstown High School fire alarm panel and using capital reserve fund monies. And we had originally budgeted almost fifty-eight thousand dollars for that project. The final amount that was spent on that project was fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. So you'll see that for that particular project, there is a motion on your sheet and one on, as well as on the salmon colored one, to authorize the trustees to disperse from the fund. The second one is an unfinished project. About half of this project is done. And what we learned, Laura had conversations with our auditing firm, that we technically should seek reimbursement for the monies that we have spent out within the fiscal year. Meaning that from an accounting perspective, if we incurred the cost, we should try to get the monies back from the trustees and book it all to this fiscal year. So that's why you have this second project, which is the Mountain View rooftop unit, where we budgeted sixty-five thousand and our costs to date have been a little over thirty-six thousand. So what we're asking for are two motions, both of which ask the, direct the trustees of the trust fund to reimburse the school district for these two projects. And they're pretty self-explanatory. They're on this page. And I believe that Caroline is gonna, unless there's any questions, she would make motions on it.
I'll start with the fire alarm panel and motion to withdraw fifty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars from the facilities capital reserve fund held by the town of Goffstown trustees of the trust funds and deposit it into the capital reserve, capital projects fund to fund the completed Goffstown High School fire alarm panel project.
Thank you Caroline. Do I have a second?
Sure.
By Dan. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
I'll do the second motion. A motion to withdraw thirty-six thousand, seventy-five dollars from the facilities capital reserve fund held by the town of Goffstown trustees of the trust funds and deposit it into the capital projects fund to fund the partially completed Mountain View Middle School rooftop unit project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Dan. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
That's it.
Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Budget committee. Jared.
There'll be a meeting, and I quote, some Tuesday in June.
All right. Thank you Jared. P and C. Nicole?
Uh, yeah. We will be meeting at the next, ahead of the next meeting, June third, six PM. But in the meantime, we have gotten you a, an updated draft copy of the mission and vision statement. You might recall that we worked to kind of put the two together. So the school board mission vision with the school mission vision. So there was quite a lot of changes trying to make that all one document. So you do have a version in your email with all of the mocked up changes and comments. But you also have a clean copy that I think was printed in here as well. So if you guys could just review that for the retreat, then we'll discuss it for the retreat. And otherwise, it's that June third meeting.
Thank you Nicole. All right. Policy review. Shane.
Thank you. Policy met last Monday. We spent the bulk of our time working on the two policies that we'll be sending you for first reads tonight. We will next meet on June tenth, twenty twenty-four at five-thirty at the SAU.
Thank you Shane. C and E. Ginny.
Um, Goffstown High School addressed two topics in their presentation. Kim McCann discussed an amendment to, to, excuse me, procedures in the handbook, which we've just talked about. She also provided an update on the teacher leaders' research into implementing a Latin honor system. DHS plans to continue exploring the Latin honor system and will present their findings to C and E in September. No action was taken on this matter earlier this month. And at our final meeting this year, which is June tenth at seven PM, the meeting will feature a presentation on a pilot program for standard-based reporting in grades K through six for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you Ginny. Technology. Dan?
We have not met. I don't expect to meet. But I did hear some interest in good news.
Yes. So Reda offered to join you on the committee.
Hooray!
Thank you Reda. So make sure.
I'm assuming there was no competition.
And have us approve it, because I think that's part of what we do at the beginning.
Yep.
And so.
Yeah. Go ahead.
We're gonna double.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's the chairman's duty to appoint people to certain committees and they present it to the group and we all approve it.
Yes. So I appoint Reda to be on the technology committee. But Dan?
Correct. Except.
I, it's probably good. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know if we have to make a motion, but I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment.
Yeah. And I'll update the committee reports, the assignments. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Out by Ginny. Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you.
We think we might have one more.
Really?
We could have three.
Wow.
I don't know if we have one more yet, but there is an open slot for one more.
Jack looks pretty interested right now.
You mean when he just ran out the door?
All right. So make sure that Reda is in the loop with the technology emails. Thank you Reda again. All right. So meeting to be determined?
To be determined. I have to talk to Mr. Borget.
All right. Thank you Dan. All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a few quick ones this evening. If you have not heard, I wanted to let you know that Crispin's House Coalition for Youth has a new executive director. We have not yet had the chance to meet. She's coming to the SAU tomorrow to meet the SAU leadership team. But I'm pleased to welcome Samantha Baileyan. I hope I'm saying her last name correctly. Haven't had the chance to meet her yet. But she has taken over. And I think last week was when she started, maybe even the week before. So we'll look forward to meeting her and to getting the chance to work with Samantha. So Mr. Gross and I are very pleased to let the board know that middle school athletics transportation has started. So several years after we were no longer able to provide middle school transportation, we have a small scale happening. We have a couple of drivers now. And the truck center has made some flexible arrangements. And we're able to have some transportation to some of our away middle school events. So that's a good thing. So we hope that this will continue for, for next year. Scott and I have said many, many times, we have wanted to provide middle school transportation. We simply have not had the capacity. So we're very excited. Scott, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I did. And hopefully I won't make them blush. But so I, I had, every once in a while, I'll have breakfast at Sawyer's. And there is a spot, I guess designated for Mr. Carbono here. So I sat in Mr. Carbono's seat and I believe I solicited another bus driver while at the counter. So we're, we're working diligently. And I, and I think it's, well, you laugh, but it's all of our jobs to try to do this, right? So it's like you, there are only a certain group of people who want to drive school buses and then drive middle school co-curricular school buses. So you always gotta strike while the iron is hot. And I think it was good luck just sitting in Jack's seat, as long as you don't go there between eight-thirty and nine-thirty Monday through Friday.
You're the one that put my sign upside down?
Yeah.
Oh boy.
Oh, you saw that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Moving on. So Mrs. Kohler and I haven't had the chance to spend a lot of time on this, but we continue to receive some new guidance from the US DOE on Title IX regulations. And this is getting even further complicated because at this point, there are fifteen states that have sued the US Department of Ed. So as we're digesting these changes, I did want the board to know and to anticipate that there will be policy changes that will likely come out of this. So we'll continue to work towards that. And lastly, I wanted the board to know that we've worked very closely with our career and technical education partners in the Bedford School District and the Lunenary School District. We have been negotiating the contract with the Manchester School of Technology. And our attorney, Gordon Graham, actually was on a call today, putting hopefully the final touches on the contract. And I do anticipate having the contract to bring before you to your next meeting. And it's a contract that has already essentially been negotiated. So our attorney, Bedford's attorney, Lunenary shares the same attorney. So we actually got a half price deal on this particular one, working with the Manchester attorney. So we'll be ready to bring what will be a four-year agreement for students to continue to attend the Manchester School of Technology to your next meeting.
Great.
And I'd be happy to stop there and answer any questions.
Go ahead Dan.
We're, since it's the same attorney representing three different districts.
Just two.
Or two different districts on the same thing. Were there, did we have complete agreement between the two districts that he's representing in our favor?
So fascinatingly enough, I had never been through one where you happen to have the same attorney for, for two parties. What, the way that Gordon did it is he identified, here are the things that Lunenary and Goffstown need to talk about and be on the same page. So he. So he gave us recommendations. And then the superintendent and Lunenary and I met and we went through each of them and we either agreed or disagreed.
Okay.
And we moved forward that way. And actually, he and I agreed on all the changes. So it actually made it pretty easy. But Gordon specifically wanted us to do it that way.
Yeah, because there's some kind of conflict of interest.
He just wanted to make sure that, you know, that we really identified because there could be things that might be better for Goffstown in a particular way. And so we worked through all those.
Super.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone else, questions, comments? All right, seeing none?
Thank you.
Are you all set?
I am.
All right, so the old business, the mission and vision, you're set with that, Nicole, what to read through it and?
Yeah, just make sure that you've gone through for the retreat and we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you. All right, new business, board retreat agenda.
So we've been working on a draft agenda. I think, I won't speak for Mrs. Bump, but I think we were looking for anyone who has agenda topics that you'd like to recommend, to bring forth. We have a draft agenda already started. So if there are any topics that are important to you or things you'd like to be considered, please let Nicole know.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, first read policy, Shane.
Thank you. So these are the two policies that we spent the bulk of time on at our meeting last week. It is the student board member policy and teacher involvement in the student making policy, which is essentially the teacher representative policy as well. So we tried to make them as consistent as possible and as applicable. So read through them, mark it up. If you have questions or, you know, suggestions on how to better change or fix any of these policies, we're happy to hear them at our next meeting. The goal is to have these approved, hopefully at the retreat, so.
All right, thank you, Shane. All right, staffing, so the blue sheet is the updated one.
Okay, so the blue sheet.
Can, can we just go back to?
Go ahead, Nicole, sorry.
Are we supposed to bring up any concerns now or is this supposed to wait until next meeting?
Usually it waits to next meeting.
All right, then.
Why wait?
There's usually questions, if, do you want to say some now? You can.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if somebody has statements now, I mean, let's get them on the table to understand and that way we can ponder it.
Ponder it for next week, sure. Go ahead, Nicole.
All right, I was pretty disappointed to see this, actually, as the draft. I feel like it's been a pretty rough year for this board. I feel that our student rep came to us with a request to help build back some trust with the student body. And we are not giving the non-binding vote that our rep has asked for. And in addition, we're adding a clause stating that we can remove that rep by majority vote of the board. So it feels to me that we took something that was meant to be a positive, bridge-building effort and turned it into almost a slap in the face, honestly. So I'm not comfortable at all with the way this went forward. I'm happy to hear the reasoning for this, but as it stands, it seems insulting rather than helpful.
Shane, do you wanna?
Yeah, so I would say that there was a lot of discomfort with adding in the, the voting piece of it for both parties, both the student and teacher. And so that's why we brought it to the board. So the board is able to make changes as they see fit, so.
And the removal part, that was originally in the teachers'. So we were trying to make them both consistent. And the teachers' policy has been around for a long time.
It's not in the model policy, though, so. We have a couple.
Go ahead, Ginny.
The problem that I have, huge problem that I have, is the student representative is acting at the will of the board and maybe was, may be removed by a majority vote of the board. Sounds really nasty. The wording could be changed or something. But more importantly, they may be acting as a part of the board, not acting at the will of the board. Because they're acting as, they were, they were voted in by the population of Goffstown High School. So they're really acting as we're asking them to do. The will of the students of Goffstown High School. They're bringing voice of Goffstown High School students here. So they're not acting at the will of the school board. They're acting at the will of the students, bringing the student voice to the school board. And in my estimation, they come to us as a co-curricular activity because student council, which they're coming from, is a co-curricular activity. And they have a constitution and they have a co-curricular board of rules. So in my opinion, if something has gone wrong, then this needs to go back to co-curricular and then, or the student council's constitution, did they do something wrong? And then go back to co-curricular rules. Did they do something wrong? I'm concerned, after what went on this year, a majority vote of this board is not fair. Like, what constitutes a vote to expel a student? We can't expel a school board member, but we can expel by a majority vote of this board a representative that was voted in by an entire school population? Like, if that's not gonna tick off a couple of students, I don't know what is. And it doesn't seem fair at all. If we can't kick somebody off for bad behavior on our board, then why the heck can we say, well, the students' votes don't count and ours is more important? I would like to see at least some reason that we could kick a student off the board. This just sounds like at-will. We don't like them, they're gone, you know?
So you would change that also with the teacher?
So I think it needs to, same with the teacher, absolutely. This is not inviting language.
Okay.
At all, for the teacher or the student. We have to make it sound like we want them to come on.
Right.
Not like they're here because, oh, well, you know, we'll throw you a bone and we'll make sure you earn it. A couple of other things is, under the student expectations, a couple of things are left off. They're supposed to notify Denise if they're going to be attending the meeting. They're also supposed to leave her a written copy of what they've announced, what their report was.
Okay.
So those are two student expectations.
All right, thank you, Ginny. Go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, just to piggyback off Ginny, I agree that a student rep represents the student body. They're selected by the student body, voted on the student body. They act at the will of the student body. So I agree with Ginny on that. And I guess my, it's just a deeper question is, is this saying that we have a student representative, a particular individual, or a student representative position? Because I could understand the term, student representative position is acting on the school. You know, so, not to pick on Lil, but Lil is a current one, saying, we don't like Lil, give us somebody else. That's not appropriate.
Uh-uh.
Versus.
No.
That's my, that's my question. So is this student representative as a singular person or is this student representative position placed on the board? I, I think that that's kind of the delineation that I'm looking for. That's for BBBF. Looking at the teacher one, looking at the yellow that's there. And Lil, I think you've done an excellent job.
Thank you.
Let me say again here that they're voted on by professional staff. Does that include the administrative assistants? Does this include the nurses? Does this include the pares? Or is this just the teachers for a teacher position? I'm not sure if we need to delineate that. Because as Nicole had said about, you know, some qualms that she had, I didn't know if we're also expanding this to any representative within that school or within that tier. So this could include pares. This could include custodians that wanted to act as members of the board to represent their school or their grades. That's just a general question I have. So we do use the term professional staff. Does that mean all staff at the school or in those school systems? Or is this just teachers that are making those determinations for a teacher rep? Those are kind of the ambiguities that I'm looking for, some kind of articulation on.
All right, thank you.
I know I looked at Shane, but I know it's a group.
Yeah, I don't, do you know?
Well, the, the teacher representative is a teacher. It is not a support staff. It's not a paraprofessional. It would be anyone who would fit under that teacher definition. So that would include your nurse. That would include a library media specialist. It would include any number of teacher specialists, but it would be someone on a teacher contract.
Jack, go ahead, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I would think that if they're, they're being voted in by the, by the student body, then their removal will be by the student body, just as my removal would be by the voters of the town. You're stuck with me for three years, not just one year at a time. And I would say that that same thing should, should fall for the teachers, too. And, and I, I also like the idea of a non-binding vote. I think that if you're gonna offer people to speak of their opinions and their views of stuff, you know, for the high school representative, it's someone that you're teaching to advocate, right? Which is one of the most important things, to advocate for yourself and advocate for your point of view and, and debate your reasons why you think a policy is good or a policy is bad. So I think a non-binding vote just goes along with that. And I know there was a little bit of talk about protections of, you know, bad things or stuff being said, but it happens with no vote, it happens with a vote. And there's always an abstention. But I, I would like to, I think a non-binding vote is a good thing. And I would think that if there was issues with the way they were being representative, that I would go back to the school board or the teachers' association to, to remedy that. And I'm sure there's policies for any extreme behavior. There's policies out there for any of us to be removed if it's a criminal activity or whatever, you know. Sure, we don't serve regardless.
Thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Lil.
Yes, so when I first read through this, I honestly was like amazed. I don't, I don't understand this at all and I would love some clarification on just a few things. I understand the idea around the non-binding vote and your worries about protection. But I think we have seen this year that it doesn't matter whether the student representative has a vote or not. And quite frankly, I would like to put out there that I think we would be more protected if we had a vote, if we had a way to abstain, if we, if we had that voice under this board. I believe we would be more protected than if we are to write an email and then it gets shared. You know what I mean? I also am worried about, like, reading this. The school board may appoint a member of the board to act as a mentor slash resource for the student school board member. I think because of recent concerns, that is a very concerning statement to me. I don't think it should be someone on the board. I think it should be either an outside resource or, as Ginny was saying, this is a co-curricular thing. So Senora McKinnon is kind of the mentor or resource for the student school board member. And I think it could be problematic to have a board member as that person. I obviously do not like Section B, line three. I think that wording is very disrespectful to the position itself and kind of the integrity of the position, as was explained by the board. And I would just like some clarification on the protection that people are worried about for the non-binding vote because I don't personally understand. And I know my student council would love some further explanation.
Okay. Jared, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just one, one thing. Abstaining can cause problems, too. We have people that make up lies about people for abstaining on votes and everything else. So even having the ability to vote, and I absolutely agree everything you said, but just using the term, well, you can abstain, yeah, that can cause problems, too. And something that we have to be mindful of as well.
Thank you, Jared. All right, does anybody on the committee wanna answer Lil's question?
Yeah, there's one thing that, that I would like to be just changed a little bit. And then that, under D, number one, attend all school board meetings. Yes, that should attend all school board meetings, but I think it can be also, if you have a final, if we have a snowstorm, please don't come.
Right.
You know, you are a student and as, as much as you can get here, you're expected to always come. But if life gets in the way, please be safe. Please do work first type thing.
Yep.
So if that could just be.
Added in.
Added a little bit so that people don't think that, you know, they can't be on the board if they can't come to every single meeting.
Thank you, Ginny.
So what I'll say is that we spent hours on this policy and working on policies is not easy.
No.
The committee makes a recommendation. We bring the recommendation, recommendation to the board. The board can then make changes as they see fit. I believe at the end of our meeting, it was said, well, let's bring it to the board and they can tear it up. So that's what's happening and that's fine. And that's the process and that's how it works. So I'm an educator. I worry about protecting students. That's where I'm coming from. I don't have a feeling one way or another about a vote. I think if we allow students to vote, it's non-binding. I don't feel one way or another about it. If anyone else in the committee would like to add their two cents, I'd welcome it. But that's kind of where, where we came from. You know, the committee was uncomfortable. And if the board feels differently, then the board can make the adjustments.
Thank you, Shane. Do you have anything?
I just wanted.
Go ahead, Dan.
I just kind of had a question for Lil and Brady, if you want to chime in, because you've been, you know, on here for a couple of hours now. So we've had controversial things come up more so this year than last year. Not a lot of voting on it that I can remember. It's more like discussion or topics that, you know, have, have been not our typical agenda. But then when it comes down to voting, like even tonight, Brady, what you've seen or Lil, what you've sat in on for a number of meetings for the last couple of years, you know, budgets, what we're paying, voting on, you know, millions of dollars and, you know, that type of thing. Policy is huge, reading policy, understanding it, making thoughtful suggestions, which I think, you know, we're always open to hearing from you. One of the things that sticks out in my mind from the last couple of years is the cafeteria thing. We really look to you a lot to, you know, give us your opinion on that and give us the opinion of the student body on that. But I think in general, the things that we are voting on, it's kind of your comfort level, do you understand it? You know, when we vote on these things, it's like you are approving or not approving. There's a lot that goes into it. Yes, it's non-binding, binding, but I think that there is a huge level of like, what am I voting on, what if I say yes, or can I abstain, what's gonna happen? So I think that there is that level. So I just wanted to hear from you guys what your thought is after, you know, sitting here for a while and Lil thinking back to your early days. And you don't have to answer, Brady, it's perfectly fine.
Brady's like, I'm being put on the spot.
But Lil has been here, she's finishing up. But can you think back to your early days? And Brady, where you are in your first meeting, you know, what are your thoughts on the things we've been discussing and voting on?
Yeah.
So I think, from what I heard at the New Hampshire School Board Association meeting, what really stuck out to me was the idea that you don't have to vote. It is an optional, non-binding vote. So if you are in a situation and you have no idea what is being spent, what is being said, you can just choose not to raise your hand, not say anything. But I think the idea surrounding the vote encourages a type of, encourages better understanding, encourages more engagement for the student rep. Because, you know, sometimes when you're talking, you can kind of like trail off and think like, oh, what about my homework tomorrow? Or what's gonna be for lunch, or something like that. But I think the idea of feeling important and understanding that if you have an opinion, it matters, that idea would kind of bolster engagement and understanding further than kind of what, what sitting over here can feel like. And I think it would also encourage more questions to be asked from over here. Because I think a lot of the time, I know, starting out, I was terrified to raise my hand and speak to this board. And now I'm raising my hand 24/7, you know? But I think just kind of feeling like you can ask questions. And if you don't know something, that it's okay not to know. But that eventually you will learn and you will find what is important and you feel heard and seen properly in kind of a professional manner. I think that part of it is very important and would ultimately just level up what the student rep does for this board.
Go ahead, Brady.
Please take what I say with a grain of salt. I have an hour and a half of experience. But with what Lil was saying, where you don't have to vote, you can just not say anything. I think by having an opportunity to say something really helps reinforce the essence of what this position is, where it's a liaison, I think that's how you pronounce that word.
Liaison, yeah.
Liaison between the school and the student body and then the school board. And so by being able to have your representative just say what they think, even if it has no actual overall impact, is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. So I would like, 'cause I sit on the committee, and I've been on this board for a long time. We've gone through a lot of student reps. This was not a slap in the face. We were not trying to be disrespectful to any student rep at all. We have cherished every single one. Each student rep is different, some speak, some don't. Board members sometimes ask, but never want to put them on the spot, because some don't want to be asked a question. They just wanna come, explain what's happening in their school. We had our last student rep helped Jared and Scott with the budget committee presentation. That's never happened. I have no problem with the non-binding vote. My concern is the safety. This year, we have had situations happen that has never happened before. And my prediction is it's gonna continue. And if you, if a student rep is allowed to vote, are you gonna be, feel that you have to say something? And if you say something that is against other students or parents, I don't want a parent approaching you in the store to say, why did you vote this way and not that way? That's where the committee was coming from. It was the safety of our students and our teachers. But like Shane said, we came out as a compromise, see what everybody thought, we'll bring it back to the table and continue to work on it. But we do value our student rep. And, and I don't want you to think that we were trying to be disrespectful of the position, because we weren't. Go ahead, Jack.
So Chair, I guess this is a question I wanna ask the board. Do we have enough information to either A, kick this back to the policy to review it and to update it and amend it? Or are we okay continuing to move forward with our policy revision with this board as it sits with any kind of changes that we need?
I mean, I would say, so, I mean, I'm, because Shane, I know that you and the team, I know I'm looking at you as the person speaking about it. I know you put a lot of energy, heart into this thought process. But as a board, do we think that we need to kick it back to policy? Or are we good continuing on the path that we are in presenting this and moving forward? I guess that's the question that we really have right now.
Well, my impression is it needs to go back to policy, right Shane? To kind of take all the information from today and...
If there was a motion to return it to policy, and if that included some language that would give the policy committee direction, that could be a way to do it. So something to the effect of, if the board wanted to send this back to policy and to please include language to allow for a non-binding vote, if that's the will of the board, that could be part of the motion, that would be pretty clear to the policy committee.
Go ahead, Reta.
Can I just, I'm not putting that forward quite yet. But the, I wanna go back to the safety or the concern of protecting the student reps. And I really feel like whether they're voting or voicing their opinion, it, it's the same thing. I think, you know, if they speak and people are going to approach them with whether or not they're voting. So I think it's really a concern of any student rep or any board member, just when you're at this table being broadcasted that people can say or do things. You know, that's just, that's, that's a risk right now. Not that it's okay, but it's just, I, I think just being at this table and being broadcasted, it's a risk that they have to understand. You shouldn't have to, but it's a reality.
Thank you, Reta. Dan has his hand up then, Jared, go ahead, Dan.
And what we had been talking about, I think some of the verbiage that, that I remember talking about was student school board members are encouraged to voice their opinion to reflect it in the minutes. And what I'm kind of hearing here, including you, Lily, is that if we were amend that sentence as I spoke it to say something like, including having an optional, non-binding vote. Because I have always wanted to hear from the student reps. Very seldom have I pointedly asked a question. I can think of maybe a couple of times only, because not wanting to put it on the spot. But we put this in the policy, you're gonna be in the hot seat. Because that's really what we're doing. So is that the essence of what I'm hearing the board?
Go ahead, Nicole. Oh, wait, Jared, go ahead, Jared's hand up first. Say hi, Nicole.
I think what Reta said was very factual, and I wanna agree with her. And I do agree with her, not that I want to, I do agree with her. But when we say that they have a non-binding vote, that means they need to vote on every motion that we have. There is no, they don't vote, they would be abstaining, but that is a vote. So let's be very clear, when we say that we give somebody a non-binding vote or a binding vote, they need to vote on every motion. And if they're abstaining on every motion, that is their prerogative, of course.
Thank you, Jared. Nicole, go ahead.
I think that's an important distinction, so thank you. I wanted to go back to what Reta was saying a little bit. My thoughts on this are really that it would be a giant shame to not further empower our student representatives because we are afraid of bad behavior from the adults in our community. So take it for, take it for what you will. If adults are gonna behave badly, they're gonna behave badly, but we shouldn't take that out on our students.
Thank you, Nicole.
Can I just ask, maybe if this is me not knowing, but what we used as sort of a model for this was out of Bedford. And theirs is optional vote? What, why would, why couldn't we?
If you're giving somebody, if you're giving somebody a non-binding vote, they have to vote on, they have to, I would think that they have, I'm a purist on this matter.
Yeah.
They should be voting on everything. And again, an abstention is a vote for the winning side. I don't agree with that terminology, but that's what Robert Rule says. Versus, I'm not voting for anything. They, they don't have the ability to do that.
So is optional and non-binding the same thing? Could we have an optional vote?
I saw like,
I think you could have an optional, non-binding vote.
Bedford's a non-binding optional, that's how I understood it when always presented. I just didn't, I thought that that was a great option, but I, we, I don't know the rules.
I would tend to agree with Jared, where if they're voting, then they vote.
Yeah.
Right.
They can abstain, but they have to vote.
Go ahead, Dan.
One of the problems I'm gonna have, kind of agreed, we went through this, okay? So it, it goes both ways. Don't know whether you have to do it always, are they a member of the board? Do they do it always, or do they not? This optional thing gets tough on the chair to find out, kind of like a little look over, are you gonna vote or not on this one? You know, it's one of those things. But we have voting on teachers. I'm not sure I'm comfortable having a student rep vote on the teacher. Help me out on that one.
They could abstain.
Help me out on that one.
What does everybody think?
I mean, we can put it in there, but it's, yeah, that's...
If there are things we don't think they should vote on, it could just go up at the top with the other things. They don't have on like non-public items.
I'm trying to think of what I'm hearing is...
Yeah, I think that makes sense, that wouldn't necessarily have, ask a student to vote on teachers. That might be awkward.
Go ahead, Ginny.
I think the optional, non-binding vote would be for, we may have students coming down the road who don't wanna take the option of voting. So that would be an optional for them not to do the non-binding vote. So I think having that terminology in there is important, because some students would feel okay with it, other students may not wanna go that route. So I think optional is appropriate in that situation.
But is that for every single thing, or is that for the school year? This is where it gets complicated. So they would have to decide in the beginning if they were gonna vote or not for the school year?
I guess so, I mean...
I'm just trying to understand, this is where it gets complicated.
Yeah, so these are the, this is why it's...
These are the things that we kept going around. Go ahead, Jared.
We can always have anybody say, if I was going to vote, this is how I would vote. You know, and it's reflected in the minutes. You know, they, they have that ability to now. And so we, that, that's, that's what we have as an option. But I do wanna get into what should and should not be voted on. Things like contracts, teachers, you know, those are things. Because whether it's a teacher rep or whether it's a student rep, they represent the interest of the people that put them there. Just like, as many of you know, I don't agree with some of the things that we do in the budget committee, but damn it, I represent you guys and I'm gonna advocate for what you want. Sometimes, I don't know, does the school, does the student body even know what it is that we're talking about? Have they have formed an opinion to give to the student rep for how they should represent their constituency? I don't know.
Well, this would also go for the teacher reps too.
Exactly.
Because it'd also be a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause a teacher rep, should they be voting on their contracts? Will they do that through their union or through at the ballot box?
Right.
Those are the things that we have to think about, and should be included.
Okay. Shane?
Well, then I would say there's a number of things that need to be addressed then, so.
I think that the feedback was really good. I think the feedback is helpful to the policy committee.
Yes.
And I think this illustrates the complexity of the topic.
All right, so we need to bring it back to policy.
I do wanna, because we get stuck on that quite a bit. I think that there is a good suggestion about, I really liked having the mentor, but I like what Lil said about it being a board representative. I do agree that it should be more of a mentor from
The school.
Yeah. So I think that that makes more sense.
Well, I think it's the person that runs the student government, right?
Yeah, that would be Senora McKinnon.
They already have it.
Isn't it an old stipend?
So it should be that.
No, no, it's an old stipend.
Anything else on this? Any other feedback?
Policy committee, I think you guys are doing great. And this is just some of the things that I know that you have to turn through. And I appreciate you letting us kind of give some additional input and unfortunately have to kick it back. But thank you.
Look, it's, it's fine.
Yeah.
But does someone wanna make that motion that we discussed earlier?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to return policy BBDF and GBB back to the policy committee for revisions based on comments made. I don't wanna say what should or shouldn't be there. I think, you know, I leave that up to the team.
All right, so I have a motion.
Sorry, one more question. Is it worth us just having a vote now on whether or not we want that non-binding vote? Or, I mean, are you guys gonna go back and kind of guess at it again? And then maybe we're not happy again? Like, is it worth just saying right now where we want that to land?
Do you want a second before we discuss?
Yeah, let me, let me get a second.
Let me second it.
Yep, go ahead.
And I can comment that I, from what I hear tonight, the majority, I would hope, would vote for having both in there, are encouraged to voice their opinion to be reflected in the minutes. And that takes care of everything that's not being voted on. And adding the optional, non-binding vote to the end of the sentence, which means they have an option of reflecting in the minutes. And we can actually put, we'll discuss it, to be reflected in the minutes or whatever. And then somewhere in there, it's gonna talk about student reps are not eligible to vote on contracts, teachers, whatever.
Right, we'll do that for both.
Yeah. Or the teacher one, we'll say, teachers are not eligible, is what I'm thinking. That, that's making sense.
Okay, thank you.
Does that work?
Yep.
Still two parts that will address the...
Oh, we're also gonna address B3 too.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where that came from, it just kind of...
It came from GBB.
Yeah.
It came from GBB.
And then adding...
I think we ran out of time, and that's what happened. We ran out of time, had to put them both together, and yeah...
And then adding the two extra things that Ginny said of their expectations, which I wrote down.
And also the, the, the lower, right above the...
With some IE stuff with the attending school meetings.
All right, I think we got it covered.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion, I have a second, any for, yes, Reta?
Can I just add one more comment on the, we didn't talk a lot about the teacher involvement. It says employee, I think there's a lot of, we're using the word employee, professional staff, teacher. If we could look for some consistency, so it's clear who it is. It's like, who is the professional staff?
Right, I think that, jumping ahead of myself here, but I think that since we're talking about a teacher rep, it should be more clear that it's teachers, right? In this situation, so, again, jumping ahead of ourselves, but that's what I would suggest.
Okay, thanks Shane, thanks, Reta. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, thank you, guys. All right, so now we're gonna move on to staffing, so it's the blue sheet.
Staffing on the blue sheet. So we have three teacher resignations that we would be asking for your approval on.
I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the three resignations.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
By Nicole. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
We voted on it, but may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Two math teachers at GHS are going bye-bye. Those positions now open, 'cause we have classes that we need to fill with math teachers?
Yep, so one of them, you'll see down below, is a replacement for one of those already. So one of those is already getting filled. Math teachers are difficult positions for us to hire. You can see here, we've got four teacher nominations. So the, the elementary, middle school, and high school administrators have been busy, along with Mrs. Kohler, who sees all final candidates. So we have four nominations for you. And I would be remiss to not give a shout out to Ms. Sinclair, who...
Did she retire three years ago?
Yeah.
She's retired about seven times, and she's an excellent teacher and a good woman, and we're so glad that she continues to be with us.
Thank you, Ginny.
All right, I'll need a motion for the teacher nominations.
Motion to approve the teacher nominations.
Second.
Second by Jared, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous, and the administration...
And lastly, we have two administrator nominations. I'm very proud to bring the nominations for Mark Lacass and Ryan Cowett, two teachers who we are happy to promote and move up in the system. And their contracts are well within budget parameters.
Motion to approve the administrator nominations as presented.
I have a motion by Cal, second by Ginny, any further discussion?
Question on Mr. Cowett. He's filling in some pretty big shoes from his predecessors. What is his experience in that endeavor of...
So we, we could talk more about this in non-public, but Mr. Cowett is an experienced teacher and coach. So he has not been an athletic director. This will be his, his first foray as a school administrator.
But he's been coaching for...
He's been coaching for a long time. He's also been helping this past spring in the department as they've been kind of short-staffed. So he was the pick of the committee from the high school, and we're excited to have him move into that role.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other discussion, we have a motion, we have a second. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. So we do...
We do.
Yeah, any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Go ahead, Jared.
I'm just looking at, 'cause it was in the packet, the capital improvement plan for new middle school. Looking at why it's a new middle school versus elementary school still baffles me. I know that being the chair of the facility needs commission. We talked about a new elementary school. And this doesn't clearly articulate the difference of why we need a new middle school, which would be more expensive than a new elementary school. So if we could have, not right now, of course, but just greater detail, because this is in our CIP plan, I would not be in support of a new middle school, since we do have a middle school that has plenty of capacity and our areas of watch are primary schools. So I would just like to know a little bit more about that and why we're focusing on a new middle school. I know it's because it might be in proximity to the high school and there might be sharing of... to the high school, and there might be sharing of athletic fields, but again, that wasn't what the committee came out with. So I would be interested in why we're going against what the committee came up with.
Scott, do you want to answer any of those right now?
Do you want me to answer it now?
Yeah, you can explain why this is in the packet.
So the reason why that's in there, and sometimes we have the benefit of getting board input, and sometimes we don't, in this particular one, we didn't. The middle school option is the more expensive option. And I think if you're going to be putting forth a worst-case scenario, that's the middle school option. If that ultimately gets backed off on, and this board wants to through your retreat or through other deliberations, wants to go with an elementary school option, that's fine. I've always found it's better to put down what you think is the worst cost case scenario and back off it than tell people that you might spend 50 or 60 million on an elementary school, and then you change your mind, and then it's a 70 or 80 million dollar middle school. So there are some benefits, as I put in the the description for CIP, in the sense of sharing facilities. So if you look at, say, Londonderry is a good example, where Londonderry and Bedford, for that matter, have, you know, have middle school and high schools on the same campus in close proximity. You are sharing athletic fields, you are sharing parking, you're sharing, in the case of Londonderry, they have a gymnasium that is not connected to their high school, but yet services is, can be used for both high school and middle school purposes. So there are some of those benefits. With that comes a higher price tag, obviously, so.
Scott, could I also add the instructional benefits as well, of being able to share staffs? As an example, using world language teachers, using mathematics teachers for some of our students who are taking those higher-level courses. When you have close proximity, the students can actually go onto the high school campus and be able to take geometry, algebra, and some of those other courses. So beyond the facilities part, there's some instructional practices as well that we would benefit from.
And lastly, you know, I would, I would say that, you know, being at New Boston meetings, and obviously their enrollments have changed over the last, you know, three years. But when we started that process before, even like before COVID, the enrollments in New Boston Central School were getting up close to 575. And the notion was, oh, what are we going to do with all the housing that's going on in New Boston? And a new middle school provides a potential revenue source. If New Boston saw their population explode, and they would then send their sixth graders, as well as their seventh and eighth graders to a new middle school, you'd have an additional revenue source. So I think, long story short, it is the more expensive option, but I think it's that worst-case scenario, you know, financially. So I, although, I know, Jack, you'll be representing the the board for CIP, I just let them, let them know that, that it is, it's one of two options, and new elementary school is also one. Can we just add this to the retreat, maybe?
I was just going to share, it's already on it.
It's already on it.
This was just a courtesy.
Yeah, we, we've got this topic on the, on the retreat agenda.
Thank you.
All right. So we need, we have, we do have non-public. So I need a motion to go into RSA 91A 32I, consideration of matters relating to the preparation for and the carrying out of emergency functions, including training to carry out such functions developed by local or state safety officials that are directly intended to thwart or a deliberate act that is intended to result in widespread or severe damage to property, or widespread injury, or loss of life.
So almost.
By Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Nicole, was that you?
Yes.
All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 Shane?
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in non-public. So down to the office. Bye.